So I'll call this meeting of the Schutzeberry School Committee to order. I want to say, welcome to Katrina Catalano, who's our new school committee member. Welcome aboard Katrina. Um, I guess we could start off just, I mean, I don't know who you know and who you don't know Katrina, but I'm Jeremy Mayu. I'm the current Chair of the School Committee through lack of anyone else volunteering last time around. Maybe we can just kind of go around and introduce ourselves and what our roles are.
Hi Katrina, welcome. I'm Anne. I'm the Principal of Schutzeberry Elementary School.
Hi Anne.
Hello Katrina, I'm Shannon Cleveland. I am the Superintendent of Schools. Welcome.
Good to meet you.
You know, I'm Caitlin Sheridan. I'm the Director of Finance and Operations.
Who's the dog behind you?
Oh, that's Hunter. There's another one behind me, but he's more discreet.
Very important introduction.
I'm Susie Moser. I'm the Liaison from the Finance Committee.
Suzie's magic.
I've heard this.
Hi, I'm Leah. I am just a general member of the School Committee. I also serve as a representative to the Joint, Joint School Committee, Joint School Union.
Leah's magic too. There's no such thing as just.
Hi Katrina, I'm Nate Longcope. We know each other. I'm currently on the Joint Advisory Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. I believe maybe some other, a Policy Committee, it's some other committees.
You also pinched it on the Negotiation Committee as well at the end.
That's right.
So, yup, um, is that, oh, who else we have? Trevor, Trevor.
Oh, hi, hi, I'm Trevor. I just take minutes.
There is no just, he's magic as well.
Make sure that we follow the correct procedure.
I was gonna say, when we have any issues on procedure, Trevor's there with an answer to get us through.
That's critical.
Yeah, I mean, like the impromptu parliamentarian too.
He knows a lot about space.
His middle name is Robert's Rules. Um, so, welcome Katrina. Do you want, I mean, do you want to give us a little bit of like, what brought you to this?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm Katrina, obviously. I've lived in Schutzeberry for a few years now. And my daughter goes to the CNC programming with Nate's daughter. So that's how my connection here. I realized there was a School Committee seat open and I figured I had some amount of spare time and it'd be a nice thing to do to serve.
Right on. Um, I'm assuming because you know Nate, he probably gave you a better intro to this then. It's just an hour every month. But one of the things that we've been talking about on the Committee the last couple of years is how, try to be more clear about the kind of responsibilities that they fall into. Because I think when I was recruited, it was like, it's just one meeting a month. And there's, there are some other responsibilities, which is the first kind of order of business today, is around the reorganization of the Committee. And I sent out, I think for everyone, I sent out a list of the responsibilities. I'm actually going to share here. We were just looking at it in the Policy Committee meeting. Look at me, I have no idea what I'm doing in terms of sharing on Zoom suddenly. There was a time where I ran classes on this platform. I don't know what my problem is. A second, um. All right, let's see. So, I don't know if you, okay, I'm not going to do this. I'm going to actually just tell you what it is. Sorry. So basically, there's a number of different seats that we kind of, or hats that we all kind of wear. And one of those is because we are part of the Joint Supervisory Committee for Union 28. There is a, there's, I think, three voting seats and two alternates on that. So basically, we all have a role, but only three of us are supposed to, or two of us, two to three of us have to show up. And they meet every other month on the, I want to say, third Monday of the month. All right. So that's part of it. We also have one member and Anna Heard has said she'll stay on for it, but, the actually more troublesome than any of these other committees is the Amherst Regional School Committee. There's just a lot more meetings. There's a lot more going on. It tends to have a lot more issues. And Anna has been doing that for two years. And bless her, that's all I can really say. So she has agreed to stay on to that. And then the other one is that there's the Collaborative for Educational Services, which is down in Northampton. And they meet every other month as well. It's sort of a, they help to provide services, they help to provide sort of bulk purchasing power, that sort of stuff. A lot of the things that they do are not necessarily directly relevant. They provide PD. And they have a lot of other programs that are beyond the scope of our school, but we have one seat on that, on the Collaborative as well. That's every other month. They've been doing hybrid, so they do virtual or in person. And if you go in person, they order in food and they have like a dinner at 5:30 and the meeting starts at 6:00 in Northampton on Holly Street. So those are kind of, I feel like I'm missing something else. The Policy Subcommittee and the signer of the warrants, those I think are all of the, are all of the plays, all of the pieces. The person whose seat you are replacing was the representative for the Collaborative. And I think that was, sorry folks, I'm just gonna, I think that was the only one that Jen was lead on. I think everything else, she was just the normal kind of alternate, alternate part. Is anybody other Committee members, is that your recollection as well? I can pull up the email, but.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
I think you're right.
So I guess to start the reorganization, you know, we could, I guess we should start maybe with, if they have a Chair and a Co-Chair, or whatever it is, I'm sorry, I'm going to look at the text again. It's really funny because we were talking in the Policy Meeting, none of us had ever actually read this policy before. So for two years, we've kind of been winging it, but it turns out we're supposed to meet like nine days after the election to reorganize. And that might have made a lot of sense rather than rolling it into our regular meeting. So, sorry folks, this is the other one. We just read this. I can't believe that it's not just like, okay, I think it's right here. I got it. All right, so the two that start us off are the Chair and the Vice Chair. All right, so we need somebody to nominate from the floor, somebody for Chair, and we're going to need somebody for Vice Chair. The Chair's responsibilities are to call the meeting to order, to announce the business, enforce the Committee's policies, recognize people who desire to speak, especially if we do public comment at the beginning, explain what the effect of a motion would be if it's not clear, restrict discussion to the question when a motion's before the Committee, answer all Parliament, parliamentary inquiries with the help of Trevor, and put motions to a vote stating definitively and clearly the vote and result thereof. So that's the role of the Chair. It is also the responsibility of the Chair, I guess, to ensure compliance with state law and Committee policy regarding notification of meetings and posting those to the, to the website. In terms of duties of the Vice Chair, basically, the Vice Chair acts in the absence of the Chair as the Presiding Officer of the Committee and will perform other duties. So that was Jen's other role. Jen was actually the Vice Chair as well. So let's, I guess, start with, I guess there's two ways we could do this. First off, is there anybody who would like to put a name forward for Chair? If anybody would like to volunteer to be Chair?
I nominate you, Karen. I'm sorry.
Same, second.
Didn't check in with me before the meeting about that Nate. Um, no, it's fine. I'll continue to.
You're doing a great job, man. You're hard on yourself. You're doing a great job.
I'm learning on the job.
Great.
Yeah, great. I could, I could continue with that. Let's, so I guess we have to put that, so Nate.
Support you.
Nate moves to nominate me as Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, and so Katrina, when we vote, we generally just kind of raise our hands for the video and we say our name. I was told early on in my time here that we would just kind of fall into a rhythm. And I feel like we might have done that finally in the last meeting just before we had to.
I think alphabetical order is a good idea.
All right.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so let's, let's go for that. That would mean Katrina would have to vote first, right?
I, what do I say? Do I say?
Catalano.
I say I vote yes.
Yes.
Katrina votes yes. Katrina got a lot of votes, yes.
So, I'll go Mayu.
Jack Eye.
Longcope, bye.
Did you see, you just made us all have to alphabetize our last names on the fly, which if any of us have rampant anxiety was really hard. All right, so I'll remain as Chair for another year. So now we need somebody who will be Vice Chair in the, you know, if, if I were absent, so.
I nominate myself.
I, oh, I don't, I don't, I'll definitely nominate you.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, so Nate, as Vice Chair is, sorry, moved by me, seconded by Leah. All in favor?
Jack Eye.
Katrina.
Yeah, I'll go by.
Well, see, we tried, my UI.
It's good. It's good practice.
We did it, we did a good job.
Do I say my last name or my first name?
Yeah, Cat.
Catalano. Just say your last name.
All right.
We're just following the, the, the Union 28, Joint Supervisory way of doing things. All right, so that is, those are our, our, our officers. And I wonder about, the only other position, so I guess, let's, let's just have a discussion here. Are there people who want to flip-flop, change? I know we probably could have had this conversation before this meeting, but if there are things that you're doing right now that you don't want to be doing, or if we want to kind of trade some positions, this would be the time to discuss that, I guess. And I guess the only spot that is not currently filled that needs to be filled would be the Collaborative for Education, which Jen was also on. So, yeah.
Can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
Leah, I, I think that you should be on the Policy Committee. I think I'm, you're a better candidate for it. You're, you're policy oriented. What I've seen of you is really you're a dot the I, cross the T kind of person that I am not. I am not. And I just want, if we can trade, if you have something you want to trade, I can take a responsibility from you, but I kind of feel like you're, you'd be good at this role.
Um, the only issue I have with the Policy Committee is I'm usually like cooking dinner, right?
Right. You're just like the rest of us. That's, we, we all arrived five minutes late today for the exact same reason.
And we have dinner right when the kids get home from school at 3:30. So, you know, we're weird like that, you know?
I, I can, I can join Policy. I think if I join Policy, can I give up my Union 28 representation?
Oh, interesting. Okay, so let's, yeah, let's take a look at that. Um, so in terms of the Joint Supervisory, there's,
Three.
There's three positions. The Chairperson has to be one. So that was the thing that I kind of, when I took on Chair, I was like, okay, I'm going to do this, but that's all I'm doing. Because there's basically, the Chair has to be on the Policy Committee and the Chair has to be on the Joint Supervisory Committee. So there has to be, two of us besides me have to be voting members of the Union 28 Joint Supervisory Committee. So if Leah was no longer that, we would have to have, it would probably have to be Katrina who would take that, that other position on, and I can't, I, my sense is that Anna does not want to take that on in addition to Amherst. Go ahead Nate.
Leah, isn't there a, a role within that Joint Supervisory Committee that is that regional representative? Do you want off the Joint Policy Committee? Because I will take on the role of Regional Union 28 Rep.
Okay, yeah, it's the budget and personnel. It's the budget and personnel. And I would, I could take over the CES to free up like whoever, since that doesn't have someone right now. So I'd be happy to take on CES and Policy and continue to sign warrants if people were okay with that.
Okay, I think I saw Caitlin and then I saw Shannon and then I see Nate.
I'll, I'll Jim, but the Budget and Personnel Subcommittee Member has to be on the Joint
Yes.
Supervisory, so we can't split that piece. So just.
I think that's what Nate was saying. He would take that on you, right?
Yeah, so.
I, can I ask what the extra responsibilities are from you for that?
Can I, can I just say that I think that that position is going to have to be part of the reorganization of the Joint Supervisory Committee? Because it, it isn't necessar, I don't think that we necessarily, do we necessarily have to have a Schutzeberry member on that? Oh, we do.
Everyone has a member.
Okay, thank you. So maybe Caitlin could speak to that. That's her, sort of her baby over there.
So the Budget and Personnel Committee, we are, we meet at least twice a year to look at the Union 28 Budget, usually in September and then in November. And unless there are any changes to the Budget, unless there's any, anyone new that's coming, I think it's just if a Superintendent's coming in, or you know, there's any issues, it's, it's usually twice a year, maybe three times a year. And for like a half an hour.
Before the meeting, similar to like the way we run the Policy Meeting here, right? And my first year on School Committee, that was my role in the Joint Supervisory. So it was not, it didn't feel like a lot to me.
Thumbs up, thumbs up. Where's the thumb?
Okay, um, so let me just see, I'm sorry, my screen does not show me all of you, so I want to make sure I'm not ignoring anybody who has their hand up right now. Shannon, you made, did you have another point to make on that?
No, I just wanted to make sure that they, they knew that that was required. So it's sort of like a twofer.
So what I heard was Leah, you're open to the idea of CES? You'd like off of the Joint Supervisory as a voting member? You'd have to be an alternate. And then Nate, when we do the reorganization of Union 28, you're open to taking on the Budget and Personnel Subcommittee? Yes?
Unless Caitlin wants it.
Oh.
Or Katrina, or Katrina wants it, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, Caitlin has to be there. She's like the finance director.
Unless you want to get it, it's up to you.
Okay, um, well, so again, just to be clear, we aren't going to, we don't have to nominate someone right now for the Budget and Personnel. All we have to do is decide who our three members for the Union 28 Supervisory Committee are. And then when we reorganize the Union 28 Meeting, probably on Monday, the first meeting is on Monday. Well, not the first meeting, but our next meeting is on Monday, then we can figure out who's going to take over the Budget and Personnel Subcommittee. Okay, so Katrina, because you're new, is, do, you know, do you have an interest in the Collaborative? Would you like to, I think we all would probably agree, it's totally fine if you just want to like, be on this Committee and the Union 28 Committee and, you know, start off with that. I think that, um, that's absolutely fine as well, as you start to figure out your role.
Yeah, um, sorry, I was trying to like keep track of what's open and what's shifting and where there are spots. So the spot for Union 28 is, is then alternate voting? And so that means if someone else is, what is it?
As of right now, it would be me because I have to be on it. And Nate just agreed that he'd be on it, so we'd still need one more member.
Okay, sorry.
Could be you. You could do a name.
All right, well, it sounds like it's me.
Okay, and then Leah, we'll let you, I think, actually Leah, you might be able to make better heads or tails of the Collaborative. I felt a little lost there in my year and my sense is that I don't know how often Jen actually attended this last year, which is another problem that they've had, not with our district, but in general, is just getting, like, I know I work at tech and I have never seen the tech representative at the Collaborative Meetings, ever. So like, it might be good to have somebody who kind of can understand all of the things they do, because I sometimes felt lost there in my first year. So I guess we could go with this. So what we're going to need to do is I need somebody to, let's, let's start at the top of the list here. So we got the Vice Chairperson, we got that, okay. So Schutzeberry School Committee, we need to have nomination for a position on the Policy Committee. Did we decide on, oh, so that's the other position that's open right now, right?
I'm taking that, yeah, I'm taking that over from Nate, I think.
You're going to join us. All right, so I nominate Leah as our, as the second member on the Policy Subcommittee?
I second that.
All right, all in favor?
I.
My UI.
Jack Eye.
Longcope, bye.
Right on. Thank you guys. So then we have the positions on the Union 28. So I would like to nominate for the Union 28 Joint Supervisory Committee Nate Longcope and Katrina Catalano. All right, all in favor?
Jack Eye.
Catalano Eye.
My UI.
Longcope, bye.
I love how we've basically taken something that was moving smoothly and we've just made it harder. Okay, so I'll, I'll nominate Anna Heard in absentia for the Amherst Palom Regional School Committee.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Catalano Eye.
My UI.
Jack Eye.
Longcope, bye.
All right, unanimous. We do need an alternate for the Amherst Palom Regional School Committee, which we did not talk about. In case Anna was not able to attend, I guess that was Jen's role as well. Do we want to nominate an alternative for the, an alternate? Can we just nominate Anna as the alternate too?
So why are you being the alternate?
What's that?
Pretty consistent about.
Yeah, she's super, like, I don't think she's ever missed a meeting. And you know, of course, like, if it came up that you couldn't attend, you wouldn't be able to attend. I'm, I mean, I will put myself out there for it, I guess, if we need somebody else to do it, in the hopes that I'll never have to. So.
I second that. Right there.
All right, all, all in favor, my, all in favor, sorry Katrina.
Catalano Eye.
My UI.
Jack Eye.
Longcope, bye.
Perfect, all right. So I'm going to nominate Jean Catalano for the position, no, sorry, not you, I apologize. I'm going to nominate Leah Jack for the position of the Board of Collaborative for Educational Services.
I second that.
All right, all in favor?
Catalano Eye.
My UI.
Jack Eye.
Bye.
Perfect, oh my goodness, now this might work well all year. All right, so we have the Supervisory School Committee. So I'm going to nominate, I guess, myself and Nate and Katrina as the voting members to the Supervisory School Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Catalano Eye.
My UI.
Jack Eye.
Longcope, bye.
All right, unanimous again. All right, so the other two members, so Leah and Anna, you are alternates on the Supervisory School Committee by default. So I think that that is the end of it. So fantastic. Thank you guys. I'm sorry that took a little bit longer than I was hoping, but not so bad. What?
You will have to vote on Budget and Personnel at this meeting, not on the one on Monday.
Oh, really? Damn it. Okay, fine. Nate, um, so, what was that? Was that you Nate? You're going to do Budget and Personnel?
Yeah, I nominate Nate.
I seconded wholeheartedly. All in favor?
Catalano Eye.
Jack Eye.
Bye.
All right.
Can I?
Unanimous again. Yes, Nate.
Can we move the floor to Anne?
Yeah, that's what, that was, that was.
And I feel like I want to get, get her.
That is, that is our next step. Um, sorry, can I, can I intercept just for one second though? And just because I wanted to let you know about something I do want to bring up later on in the meeting. Can I just, I did too. So I think we, there was some outreach between some teachers concerned about budget and other things. And I'm just going to write to the Association, an email to the Association heads and just suggest that maybe somebody would like to attend this meeting on the regular and maybe even offer up a spot where they can kind of share whatever the Association might want to share in this meeting, sort of a member-at-large sort of position for them. Just because I feel like that idea of like transparency and kind of taking out any sort of like rumors or like, I think, you know, we live in a time right now where people are very, their, their concerns are heightened. And I think that it would be helpful if instead of people getting worried at like, you know, just before town meeting or just after the budget's been passed, if there was somebody from the Association who was kind of attending more regularly our meetings. And I want to just run that by you because I know you're going to, you know, you're going to give your report and go. And I wanted to make sure you were aware that I was thinking of that.
Oh, I appreciate it. And we've been really transparent throughout this process. Caitlin, I see your hand. Did you want to speak to that?
I was going to wait till after this. I was just going to say, I think you missed, we have to vote on the warrant signer. But I'll, I'll hold my hand and you can continue on.
Let's let, let's let Anne do her presentation and then we'll come back to the warrant signer. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, guys. I'm a little under the weather, but I'm totally, I'm just going to go off camera, but I will still be able to hear you. Um, so be nice. Okay, so basically, for as far as the principal reports go, we haven't had any changes in the enrollment. We are, been very happy to celebrate the staff appreciation with our staff last week. And it's actually been almost like a three-week type of a deal. We've had a couple of things that have already happened. And our PTO is going to do a staff appreciation lunch coming up soon as well. Our Student Council decided to do a car wash. So we had a Param Representative Stu came in. It was Stu Watson, Nurse Katie helped out. And in conjunction with fifth and sixth grade students, staff could apply to, could have, could sign up for either a car wash or, and/or a vacuum. So it was really great. The kids, the kids did an excellent job for sure. Um, we are excited to say that we just completed our MCAS today with the fifth grade science after we have already done all of the other testing. So that was great. Last week, our staff was part of a reunification training. And we've also recently had two author visits. Heather Lubenstein, our librarian's sister, her twin sister, came and shared parts of a story that our book club has been reading that she wrote. And we had David Opie, who wrote all the birds of the world and several sort of of the world books. And he happens to live in Schutzeberry and he's friends with, with Jessica CB. So she made that connection and he came today and the kids had been making birds as projects and they were very excited to meet with him and he also had lunch with them. So that was great. Session three of Enrichment Clubs are starting off. We're offering martial arts, pickleball, coloring and drama. So it's, I'm sure for our parents, they know those are fitting choices and kids are having a blast. Session five of Moose on the Move Walking Club, and they also have a morning component to it, has just begun as well. And some dates to kind of keep in mind, we have the kindergarten orientation on 5/21, the All School Musical on the 29th. We have Spirit Day Hawaiian themed on the 23rd. And our Strings Concert will be the 28th, then our Band Concert will be the 21st. So feel free to join us and as always, thank you for your continued support. Does anybody have any questions? Sure. Oh, I thought your arm was up. I'm sorry. No? Right.
Nate does.
Oh, well, I, I, I don't know if, there was that, an email that Caitlin sent out last week that was about the boiler. And I just wanted to touch on that and see what that's about.
So currently, the boiler is off, in the off position. So there was a concern when the Liberty Mutual came out and did an inspection that there was old water that was underneath it. So we have reached out to Jam Rog and they were working on that today. So.
Okay, I saw the truck on the road, so the jam. I was like, ah, that's going to the school.
Yes.
Is that the, was that the only concern with the boiler? Because I think that we were under the impression that we were kind of like on top of all of the, that the infrastructure projects, short of the parking lot. we were under the impression that we were kind of like on top of all of the, that the infrastructure projects short of the parking lot were done.
Yes, yes, that's, I believe that, I believe that's the case, but I can definitely double check with our head custodian that tomorrow.
Okay, cause it just, I think it felt a little bit out of the blue, like, wait, what, do we have to do something with the boilers? Did we all forget this? And so, okay.
Nope, this is a new revelation.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Definitely.
Okay. Any other questions for Anne? Alright, thank you for being a trooper, I'm sorry that we.
I am gonna skedaddle, but I will be in touch with Shannon if you have any questions or anything. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Anne.
You got it.
Alright, going back to the reorganization. So Leah, I don't know if we talked about warrant signer, I know it's by email, are you still okay signing the warrants? Is that a thing that you would do?
Yes, I'm still okay signing warrants. If anybody else wants to take it, just, just say so, but if not, then I'm happy to continue.
Um, how often do you get warrants? I'm just curious, is like we think.
Every couple of weeks.
Okay, and you just sign them all, you just sign them electronically and that's, that's that?
Yeah, review, review it. If I have questions, I can reach out to our AP person or to Caitlin. And then, yeah, I'll sign it. All virtually, which is nice.
Okay, alright, well then, I nominate Leah as the warrant signer.
I second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Catalano eye.
My UI.
Jack eye.
Long cope eye.
Perfect, and it is unanimous, and I think with that, we have reorganized the committee. Yes? Okay, perfect. Alright, so, um, let's see, we'll do, I guess we, we have public hearing, the only member of the quote-unquote "public" is another magic individual. Jess Carlson Belanger, do you have anything, Jess, that you want to speak to in the public hearing?
No, I just, as you mentioned earlier, that it would be helpful to have a staff member here to like take notes and pass messages. I thought I, we put a sign up in the staff room and nobody has signed up for each month. So, so I thought I'd just log on tonight and take some notes and put the notes in the staff room so that it's visible to everyone and hopefully that will also help to deter any worries about budget or anything like that. So just trying to be a helpful liaison tonight.
We appreciate that. And, you know, in, in the new business part of tonight, we'll discuss that a little more fully, I think. I didn't see who was first, but let's go Suzie and then Nate.
I was just wondering if the minutes for the meeting that Trevor gets done get posted in the staff room?
Interesting.
They may, but they're not anywhere where people will see them. Like, they might be hung, I used to, when I worked in the office, I would hang them on the bulletin board near our mailboxes, but people wouldn't really go, go there to look for them. So I thought I'd.
Yeah, maybe a binder that's labeled as such, so people can go back and look.
Just as another, just as another sort of way of trying to like, make people feel included.
Yeah, and they might look at them in the staff room, I'm not sure, because I don't eat lunch in there usually, but, so they might look at them. But, yeah.
And of course, they are on our, our website as well in a very timely manner, so. There's another possibility as well. Okay, so we'll come back to, we'll, we'll bring a little more discussion to that in our, in our new business. Alright, so review of agenda and perpetual calendar, I'm not gonna review the agenda, because I think we all have read it and seen it, but we are in May. The perpetual calendar has the reorganized committee, check. Town meeting, make presentations. I think what I would say is it's important that we're there and that we are able to speak for the school budget. I am heartened, I guess, that we, it looks like we've kind of, Caitlin has found some way to make it so that we're not gonna have to end up going to the Finance Committee to ask for more money to fund the new contract, so that's helpful. So it will just be the budget that we're making the case for, that's good. School choice vote, I believe we took that vote last time along with the discussion of it, so we don't need to do that right now. Town meeting is coming up, and so please, please go. And then the other piece that's on here is the superintendent evaluation, which I don't know where we sit with that or what we're planning on doing with that.
So I can speak to that, that will be done by the Joint Supervisory on Monday's meeting. And it, it's been a little bit clunky, but I think we have a lot of new players there also. But I will present a summary of my summative evidence. And then every, my understanding is every voting member will then be given the rubric. And they will vote for, you know, whatever the rating is for each indicator. And then I believe those go, it has to be discussed publicly. And so my overall rating, though I may get it over the summer, will be tabulated by, I believe, Robin and the Chair of that Committee tabulate all the surveys as they come in. The Chair will set the deadline of when that is, and it will be, the results will be, or the rating will be announced at the September meeting, because they, they don't meet over the summer, and so I believe that's gonna be the timeline. At least to my understanding. So I'll present the, a summary of my evidence and all, all members will get a narrative, so they don't have, you know, I'm gonna frame, and then they can review it before they get there, make their, give their feedback.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. So yeah, and then the other piece, I'll make that adjustment. Hopefully, by the time we meet in September, I'll have a, actually new and very dialed in with us, at least, perpetual calendar for us all, to all refer to. And then the other piece in here, which would probably be, under the School Council, it says to review the school improvement plan for the following year. And again, that's something that is outside of my institutional memory at this point, as far as what we, our responsibilities are with that.
So I can speak to that. The school improvement plan is done by the School Council, the Principal leads that work. And she will present it. It's typically presented over the summer, but school committees that don't meet over the summer, so my guess is she'll, Anne will be presenting it in June for the following school year. Sometimes with committees that don't meet over the summers, they may allow her to present it in September. That will be for the committee to decide, but.
Okay, I'll reach out to Anne and check in on that too. Alright, great. And that is it. Amherst Regional will be doing its Superintendent Evaluation as well, Union 28, obviously, we're gonna be doing the Superintendent Evaluation as well. So that is the perpetual calendar. I feel like we should have a little like intro and outro music to some of these things. So, moving on to warrants.
Alright, so we have four warrants, two accounts payable, two payroll warrant, thirty twenty-two from April 29th for forty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. And thirty twenty-three from May 13th for four thousand three hundred seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Two payroll warrants, three twenty-two from April 29th for eighty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents. And three twenty-three from May 12th for eighty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. No gifts or grants.
Great, thank you. Alright, approval of minutes, April 17th, 2025? Do we have a movement to accept those?
Um, I, I moved to discuss, I did have one, one quick update, but I moved to approve.
Okay, so Anne, do I have a second?
Second.
Nate Longcope with the second, alright, any discussion?
Yes, I just found one little typo. I think instead of FY, it said AY. Let me just find the paragraph. I think it's close to the end.
Yeah, it, it's contextual, because, so AY is academic year.
Oh.
FY, so it might, I mean, it might actually be wrong. No, no, it might be the wrong one, so I want to make sure that it's, it refers to the right thing.
Um, let me find it.
I'm looking as well. See Leah, this is why Nate wanted you on the Policy Committee.
Yep. Um, there's, so there's a, a motion that you made to approve Chutesbury as a, a school of choice for academic year 25 to 26.
Hmm, never mind, yeah, no, that makes sense.
Well, you know, I want to make sure, because like the fiscal year is not the same as the academic year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing.
Yeah, I don't know, for school choice, it does like, I don't know if we're thinking about it in terms of its impact on our money. In which case, we would put it as fiscal year, but I'm fine with it staying as academic year if that makes more sense.
Okay, so we've had it moved, we've had it seconded, we, any other discussion around it? Look at that Trevor, I figured out how to do the discussion. So, all in favor?
Catalano eye.
My UI.
Oh, so are we gonna keep it as academic years, since it's school choice? Okay, okay.
Cause I think it refers to like whether we're accepting them or not. Okay, so we accept the minutes unanimously, thank you for that. As a, a, a quick aside, though, I did write an email to the Town Web Committee this week asking about the minutes that are on our, on the town website, because we don't have them. And I realized I was writing to them, because when I log in, under my login, it has this like glaring, like, you need to upload all these minutes, and I was like, could we just get that taken off? And they wrote back being like, where do you see this? And of course, when you're not logged in, you don't see it. So it didn't matter, and there already is a link to where we actually do upload our, our minutes every month. So, you know, it's easily, it's easy to misunderstand or miss, see things, is all I'm saying. Alright, so unfinished business, updates, capital projects, building process update, do we have any updates Nate on capital projects?
Not right now. Still waiting to hear back about contractors and proposals, and I haven't heard anything from anybody, and if anybody has any leads, let me know of consultants for. But the, I'm waiting for the Buildings Committee meeting, so I'm gonna go to that, see if anybody has any leads.
Can you remind us of when that is, Anne? Do you know?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm waiting to look at the calendar. I look at the calendar every so often to see if it's posted, and it's not.
Okay, great. Um, thank you. So new business and discussion, we have underneath this, we have identification of school choice seats, which we did last time around. So I don't think that that is something we have to do this time. So this is where I'd just like to discuss, I, I've already brought it up, but I'd like to, I'd like to just check in with the committee about whether you all are alright with me writing to the Heads of the Association and inviting them to our meetings, just kind of formally inviting them to our meetings, and maybe even bringing up the idea of having sort of an association update as part of our agenda, so that, you know, they can share. You know, I work up at Franklin County Tech, and we have this as a part of our School Council meetings, where there's a member-at-large. And so beyond what the Principal or the Superintendent shares, they really share the things that the teachers feel are really important, or the things that teachers are doing in their rooms that they feel like are really interesting, and I think that might be a nice way to kind of, I don't want to say enticed, that seems like the wrong term, but like, a, a way of kind of making this meeting feel a little more collaborative with them, and so that they feel included as well, and kind of, that's my thought. So I'd just like to hear other people's thoughts on that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I, I saw Renee at the post office today, and I suggested to her that she send a rep from the Union to our meetings. So she said she couldn't tonight because she has pickleball, but you know, it'd be great, it would be great if someone from the Union or the, you know, just more people from the community too, more, more parents show up to the School Committee meetings, you know. I think it'd be a big deal, go a long way in quelling rumors and stuff.
Well, quelling rumors, and I also think that like when you do the, when you do the negotiations every three years, and that's the first time you're kind of interfacing with people. And if there's any sense of, like, I want to carefully, not ill will, but if, if, it would be nice to enter into negotiations feeling like we're kind of on, it's not the first time that we've communicated with some people. And so if you're, if they're familiar with us as School Committee members, and we're familiar with them as educators and Union leaders, then it might just kind of, this was a really long drawn-out negotiation process this last year, and so I'd like to try to keep that next one in mind for whoever is on this committee then. So. I saw Leah and then Nate.
Um, I, I don't have any issues with it, but I like the way that Nate framed it in terms of encouraging the community to attend, like, the Union is part of our community, so if there's like some forum that we could reach out to, not just the Union, but like, to people in the community and let them know like, hey, this, this is posted on the website, like, these are open meetings, if you'd like to join, please feel free, like, you know, we're, we're working with the district leadership to help shape, shape our, our education here.
I mean, the thing that initially, you know, I mean, obviously we have the public postings and whatever, but the other place, I mean, you know, there's, there's Nextdoor, which is like one way that has some broad, you know, in-town. You know, again, shut the comments off and just be like, hi, like, we're the School Committee, you're welcome to come in, join us, but, um, I don't, you know, I don't know, otherwise, the only other thing I could think of is in the Our Town sort of newsletter, really, when we write that newsletter, making it really clear that like, hey, we'd love to have the public, you know, more involved in the committee. We could do that there as well, which would be a less, maybe less, less exposed, it's a smaller group of people on Nextdoor, I would do worry, even if you shut off the comments, that it's opening up some other can of worms too, but, so Nate and Suzie, sorry.
I did want to say, you know, it was a long, drawn-out process, the contract negotiations, but we were the first school in our, I believe so. Shannon, you can correct me, but we were the first Union School District, school in our Union to have that contract figured out and signed. So we did a great job, and we, we did right by the teachers, and it was all good faith, I think. You know, we should be proud of what we accomplished, we should be proud of Caitlin working hard and it being under budget, we should be proud of Suzie, you know. It's, I got an email yesterday from a staff member at the school, and they were very concerned, they were talking about rumors of layoffs and all this stuff, and I, I was at the PTO meeting on Friday, I tried to talk to everybody I could and say, this is an email we got Thursday, Caitlin said, we're not over budget, it's a big deal, and it's great. It's a, you know, considering what other towns are going through right now, we're in really good shape. And it was just distressing to hear what the teachers experienced, and I don't know what's getting lost in translation. I don't know what's going on there, but, yeah, we need help, and, and like, I was frustrated, and then we looked at this policy committee thing tonight, and it said that School Committee's responsibility is to communicate with the public and to inform the public. We're supposed to be informed, and we're supposed to inform, so. I think the Our Town thing is interesting, you know, it's too bad that the woman who was running it passed away, and you know, we have to figure out how to get this information out there. You know, the email I got that said that they haven't seen the budget, they haven't seen it posted anywhere. You know, we checked, it was posted on the school website. It's been there since January, that was a public hearing. Nobody from the public, nobody from the Union was there. So it's just frustrating, it's frustrating.
Yeah, how to get the word out, and we're a small town, so it's not, I mean, like, you know, the ways that you have available to you to get word out to the greater public are personal, much more personal than they would be in a, in a bigger community, you know, there's, that's just the way it is. Suzie and then Shannon?
So, this is a common problem for all departments, all aspects of town government. Town announced is getting more people, you need to. Town announce is getting more people. You need to tell people, look on the town. Some homepage and sign up on tech for town announces. It's over on the right hand side. We just worked it out that the homepage has, um, a heading that says looking for town events. And you can click on that and you'll see the archive of town announces. It's not just what you got today. It'll be a his, it'll have a pile of them in the archive. I think it goes back at least two months. And the school committee can use town announce announcements. And so then you can say, we've put our, our budget on our, um, website. Here's the link. You could put that in a, uh, actually I can't remember if you can get links on town announce, but you can direct people into the right places. The town has a policy, has had a discussion. I'm not sure it's a policy, but I think it is. Um, town committees do not use next door shoots Barry. It becomes a big morass. So you can't go there. Um, so you can do.
Personal, as a personal sort of like school committee meetings start at whatever, but like I, I, I would rather avoid that at all costs.
Yeah, yep. And so you can use town announces for some of that. You can also. Um, the newsletter, of course, because Janice died, we don't know exactly how it's going to resurface. Um, our new TA is very interested in communication and newsletters. I don't know how she'll, she'll work it. It, those municipal newsletters also have state restrictions about what you can and can't do there. Um, but people can learn and they can use that. And, um. The contract, there's one more thing about the contract is that after Chutesberry went through it. Um, Caitlin found a resource that gathers the information about, um, in real time. Uh, benefits, levels, all that kind of stuff. So. And so that is a, um, something that people can look forward to and. And maybe it will help standardize the information that the union also gets to see ahead of time. Um, and after I heard about that, I asked Caitlin what the company's name was and. We may, if we get through this current year, um, use it for town positions, municipal positions. They can create, they have a database. They're just rolling it out, a database that will help compare those. That information, because we have a lot of positions that need to be, um, contracted. So, um, there's. It always is changing. Um, we do know that, um, we're trying to make the town announce more of a central part where people can go online. But it's a little remarkable to me, probably including myself, how little people use the web. Constructively, um, and so using our town website has got to be a tool. We have to use it as a tool because it's so hard to communicate otherwise. So. Um, you can go visit that yourself and look at where the town announces are archived and you can look back and see what's been on there. The only peop- the only, um, people that can put stuff on town announce has to be it connected to a town committee.
Thank you, Suzie. Shannon.
Yeah, I did just want to comment about a couple of things. I, I, and I'm sure it would have been much. Less labor intensive to have had that access to the Lydix program that. But you will the next time you go around the, um, negotiations. So Chutesberry was. On a different cycle than the other union schools. So we have three union schools who all had negotiations this year. And Chutesberry's contract ended last June, but I do want to compliment like. It was not, I'm sure not easy. You did not have, uh, you know, you had a new superintend- a lot of those positions weren't in place and. Chutesberry settled the contract with a change in leadership at the building and the, the union level.
Yep.
And settled it without, you know, being a year without a contract. I mean, that happens in a lot of districts that they're working without a contract for. You know, an extended year. And so you should, you should feel good about having that settled a- as laborious as it was.
Well, I want to, I, I think that you also bring up a good point, which is part of, I think, the early contention that maybe was evident in the negotiations was becoming. You know, you're, have a change at all levels. And so the idea of like what that means, um. You know, that, that, that can create some anxiety as well, I imagine. Um, yeah, Nate.
Uh, you know, I went to the Massachusetts. School, uh, school committee workshop. Yeah, I was really excited and interested in, um, hearing about the budget. You know, we went through our negotiation and I didn't have that training. I wish I had that training beforehand, but something that I really noticed, you know, when the person who was presenting. He was saying, oh, how, how many people have been in contract negotiations and how many people have been there on the management side? And then they went on to talk about all the tactics that unions do to make it impossible to negotiate. And this whole perspective, and I wish I had my wits about me in the meeting, but it's something that I found when I was in negotiation is. I'm not management. You know, I'm a, a parent and the people who. Asked me to run were teachers in the school who live in the town. And I'm advocate, I'm an advocate for the teachers. I'm not management. And the training that I got legally, that's legally required by the state is that they're throwing this. Thing at me that's saying, oh, you're management. I'm not management. I'm there as a rep. I'm, I'm there. Advocating for the teachers and for the kids and for the parents. So that's also a frustrating thing. You know, I wanted. Different set of training, different set of information.
Um, the next time there's ongoing negotiations at my school, you're welcome to just come in and observe. Um. No, I mean, and for me, having seen it from the inside and then be on the other side, it's also an interesting process as well. Um, you know, usually being represented by the Mass Teachers Association lawyer, but now I'm on the other side of the table. It's a very, it's a very different process. Um, so yeah, all of those things. Um, I, I just, I think Nate also brought up a point, which Katrina, I don't. Leah, did you do the Mass Association of School Committees training? Okay. So like within the first year of being on the school committee, there's a training you're supposed to attend. There's a couple coming up, but there's a bunch more in the fall. So it's not a rush. I guess they provide lunch as well. It's like an eight hour ordeal, but like. That's a, that's a thing that you gotta do in your first year of being on the school.
It's actually really fascinating. I thought it was really a. It very interesting. It's, it's so amazing to hear what other towns are going through. I mean, I was in Eastern Mass. I was in West. Westford and, you know, to hear what Littleton and all these towns are going through and they're way over budget. And to having to do overrides and huge layoffs. It's just like, whoa, we are so lucky. We're so lucky.
Yep, so many ways. Okay, so what I have down here is, uh, we needed, so, and I think this is a great conversation. It's a little broader than even just having the association, inviting the association in, which I think. Sounds like I will, I will write a letter. Maybe I'll wait until, maybe I'll wait until we're getting ready to start up in September again at this point. We'll see. Um, but it also sounds like the, uh, town announce would be a great way, maybe even in the fall to say, hey, school committee's starting our meetings again. We meet on the. You know, the third Thursday of the month and we'd love the public to be involved and, you know, we invite public comment. Um, so we could do that as well. Um, and then I, I always want to go, I forget who brought up the binder idea with Suzie. Um, but I wonder too about having sort of a school committee binder at the school. Um, and maybe Jess or Sammy, I don't, somebody we could, you know, we could put the minutes in it. When we approve the budget, we could put the budget in it. Like then it's there. If people, you know, it's just one more way of again, trying to make something. Available for people. And I do think that we've kind of, we're in this weird spot where people don't use websites the same way they used to. And there's so much more phone oriented and you only go to the website to find a specific piece of information. You're not browsing around like you used to in the nineties. Um, and so I just, uh, uh, you know, maybe that would be a, maybe, maybe everything that's old is new again. Maybe it's. Maybe it would be helpful to have like a school committee binder in the teacher's room at the school that has, you know, printed out copies of the things that we. That we produce here. So, um, I will put those things, uh, those things are on my list. So. Thank you guys for indulging that conversation as well. All right. So, um, any other new business that people wanted to discuss tonight?
I don't have any new business, um, Jeremy, but I did want to just confirm like. We're not saying we're going to have like an at large position, right? It's just going to be like, you're welcome to come as a public. As a member of the public to, okay, okay, good.
You, so do you have, like, what do you, do you have a opinion or idea on the idea of having like? I, I wasn't even thinking of it so much as a member at large, at large, just like maybe offering up the idea of being able to present. Of let it, we can, I think we can keep it as the public hearing piece. I think that's.
It's public. Yeah, I prefer just having it as like come as, as a member of the public.
So I think what I'll, what I'll do when I write, I'll just talk about, you know, we'd love to have you share out in the public comment section. The things that the teachers are doing and proud of in the school and just have it be like that. But to kind of just. Invite comment as well as just being present here is I think where I'm kind of looking at that from. Shannon.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get us in the weeds about this, but I just want to remind the public has to be about something on our agenda.
Okay.
So they have to speak to that, but something that they may want to consider is, I know I heard Jessica talk about, she has a sign in the teachers room. I happen to know that New Salem, uh, Swift River does the same thing that everyone signs up for a month to take notes. So I think. It's a practice among their union twenty eight colleagues. At, um, Irving, they have a, um. Uh, Irving Teachers Association update section on the agenda. And they get like a five minute spot where they can talk about what's going on, you know? Sometimes it's classroom initiatives, but if you want to hear that, um. Because the public comment part would have to, they'd have to be speaking about something. On the agenda, which might be different than you want to shout out that kindergarten's, you know, doing this really great project kind of thing.
So that, I guess, how would we feel about offering them up like an agenda point with a five minute update? Is that something that people would be open to? Not like codifying it as like a member at large sort of thing, just say like, you know, we'd like to, if, if this is something you'd like to do, we would like to make this. Opportunity available for you. Is that, are people amenable to that idea? All right. I'm seeing a lot of head shaking. Yes. Okay, good. So then let's, let's make that. So thank you for that point of clarification, Shannon, as well, because that's, that is important. Okay, um, so next up, we have the superintendent's report.
Okay, um, so I have, uh, there's not much, uh, for school updates because Anne usually covers those. Um, our last day of school is supposed to be June eighteenth. Um, so it's, it's quickly approaching. I did want to just, um, uh, and I did tell Anne I was going to address it because. Um, you know, that, that undercurrent that's been talked about here, the angst that teachers are feeling. Um, and I think it's a combination of things. They've been told the budget is tight because the budget is tight. It's the angst of spring. Um, but there are some restructuring conversations going on within the school. And I think that sometimes, um, that can be a catalyst for, ah, you know, what's going on? There, we have no planned layoffs, like there's nothing like that, but there are some movements of, of. There were some private conversations going on about people in different roles within the school next year. And I think that might also contribute to that, but I just, you know, want to reaffirm that we are, are looking to. But bring back the staff, um, and, and, um, try to relay some of those. Um, concerns, but also acknowledge that that may be at like a perfect storm. There's a lot of little things that are creating that undercurrent. Um, some union twenty eight updates, uh, the leadership team of union twenty eight, both the central office and building leadership. Have set up their summer retreat days, um, retreat in quotations because it's not anything fun and fancy. It seems like it makes work sound so much more fun. Um, but, um, the entire union twenty eight leadership team will be meeting on July first and second. And then the instructional leaders, um, so building principals will meet July eighth and ninth. Um, to sort of be start planning out what our next academic year initiatives and collaboration look like. Um, all union schools have approved budget recommendations, um, that will be presented at spring town meetings. Um, Leverett and Irving have had their meetings and have passed their budgets. Um, the next JSC meeting we spoke about is on May nineteenth, um, and I will be presenting my, um, superintendent's. Um, evidence of evaluation, um, and the charting the course, which I think is what you were speaking about. Um, the school committee leadership training program is being offered on June seventh at Greenfield High School. Um, that's the closest, um, from around here, I think, and, um.
Same day as Franklin County Pride as well.
Yeah, and there's a lot of other ones, but it won't be offered again in this area till probably next spring. So, um, that's on your MASC website for information and all that, but I just thought I'd point that out for anyone who hasn't taken it. Um, some legislative updates. This has become the most cumbersome fluid and. I write it and then I'm like, is that still accurate from yesterday when I wrote this? Um. But a couple of things that have happened, um, May sixth was the annual day on the hill that is sponsored by, um, MASC. Um, it is their annual day of advocacy. They have, um, outlined their, um, priorities for this year. Which I bring to point because that's really a school committee piece, but it very closely aligns with the, um. Uh, priority areas that have been outlined by MASSS, um, and some that are MTA, um. Recommended ones also. So I think we're seeing a lot of concern around some, from different stakeholder groups around some similar things. Um, one is to adjust the chapter seventy eight for past and future inflation. Um, improve the fiscal health of rural, rural school districts. Um, expand, expand capacity at vocational technical schools. Establish and fund a financial literacy curriculum, which would be more at the secondary level. And support school committees in their superintendent search process. Um, this. There isn't, there are a lot of superintendent vacancies and finding the right people is really challenging. You just went through this last year, so I'm sure you know, but. Um, I was just at the superintendent's, um, conference, uh, leadership conference. And of the three hundred superintendents in Massachusetts. Um, I think they said that fifty eight of them will be in their first or second year next fiscal year. So that's a really novice statewide group of, um, leaders. Um, D E C board of directors and educational secretary Patrick Tutwiler have recommended. Um, and have our, um, have hired Pedro Martinez as the next commish- uh, head of D E C. Of note that during, he is from the Chicago Public Schools. He has a, been, uh, twenty years as a superintendent. Um, and not just in Chicago, but that was most recent. Of note, during his interviews, he was the only finalist. Who spent a significant amount of time discussing and acknowledging the plight of rural districts. Um, so I think that that is as good as we could hope for, I think, um, in a candidate. Uh, the U S, um, Department of Education Office for Civil Rights, um, has recently requested that. All the state agencies sign a reaffirmation concerning compliance with the federal non discrimination. Provisions, the DEI provisions that have been outlined. And in turn, they're asking for their local, which would be like union and districts, um. To sign a compliance letter, um, uh, of, that we are going to follow the DEI, um, plans. In Massachusetts, the commissioner of education, uh, Dr. Patrick Tutwiler provided a response, which I believe Robin attached. Um, and if she did not, I will make sure she did. She sends it along, but he had a great response and he just said that Massachusetts has been, long been a leader. In diversity and equality, uh, and inclusion, and that we will continue to honor civil rights. And that we would not be signing any state, um, compliance because we do that because it's the law. Um, and at this time, no, we've not been advised at any local agencies. So for example, the Chutesberry or Union District, I have not signed any, um, compliance, um. Uh, letters we've not been advised to, although it is happening from my counterparts in other states, um. Across the, the country, um, right now we have not. Obviously people worry like, what are the ramifications for that? Um, but I was at a meeting just today, an update with, um, the acting commissioner, um, and. The funds have been released for IDEA and tight, our title funds. Um, they're not in the Massachusetts hands yet to be dispersed, so we don't know our amounts or any of that. Um, but for the fiscal year twenty six, um, those funds have been released at the federal level. So if we're going to be penalized, it's not going to be from those funds. So how that plays out, we don't know. Um, but that was his update as of today. Um, budget updates, uh, the current state budget is obviously still in, um, in flux. Um, and, you know, I have the details there, but just some of the highlights, um. Chapter seventy was funded at seven point one two billion. That is up from six point eight six billion from last year. The house increased the per pupil to one fifty expenditure, which impacts seventy seven percent of the districts in Massachusetts. Um, and, um, will certainly impact us. Um, school meal reimbursement, um, has remained level funded. Um, in the commissioner's update today, the state commissioner's update, he was very. He was very clear that it is a priority for the state of Massachusetts and the governor to continue to fund school meals. Um, regardless of what happens at the federal level, um, early literacy, um, has, um. Been increased to fifteen million. These are still proposals. They're still debating, um, and rural school aid. Which, um, is, what is really needs to happen is about sixteen million dollars is at seven point five million. So we're not really sure, um, what that will look like. But I did put in your letter that there are some amendments that, and I'm sure M A S C is probably already also shared this. Um, but that they are encouraging us to reach out to our state senators. Um, and the amendments include budget amendment six, six, five filed by Senator Lewis. Which would require, um, that they have a formal commission. To open the chapter seventy funding formula to provide adequate and equitable funding. Um, and that would really be about foundation budget reform. Um, and an amendment six, one, seven, um, filed by Senator Olivera. Which would increase the circuit breaker. So it's our special education, education reimbursement. Um, from seventy five percent to ninety percent. Um, and that will really be impactful for districts, but certainly small districts like ours. Where an out of district placement for a student who. Has to go out of district to get their needs met, which we want them to get their needs met. Um, but that's a real, you know, it, it becomes a real, um. Difficult position for small communities, um, when we have to send out of district. Uh, we have a, a, a school who's out of district right now. We're spending as much in transportation. As we are in, um, the placement costs, so, um, looking for, um. More equity and leveling the field. So that students can get what they need because that's certainly what we want, but that we want it not to be at the expense of other students. So that's the current status and I always make the disclaimer that if anything changed today. Which could happen with some of this legislator things, this was accurate as of when I, um, I presented. At, to my knowledge as of right now, but I always feel like that's the. The caveat that I could, you know, get off this meeting and find out something is, has changed.
Look, I did hear on the radio today that the school lunches and breakfasts are funded through next year. Yes. That's, that's set.
They are and, and, um, uh. So right now our Education Secretary Tutwiler is acting as the Desi Chair also, so he's holding two roles. So he did the Desi update today and he has said that that will. Even regardless of his belief is even next fiscal year. Um, that that's a priority for the state of Massachusetts. That's a priority at, um. At the State House and, um, Senate level, so he does not anticipate. Even if there's funding cuts at the secret, at the Department of Agriculture, because that's actually how it sort of filters down. Um, that the state of Massachusetts is committed. To, um, providing, um, a, um, meal program for students.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions for Shannon? All right. Thank you very much, Shannon. All right, Caitlin, it's your turn. You're up.
Okay, so, um, we'll start with the F Y twenty five budget update. So for this year. We had discussed in previous meetings, the budget for this year was. Very tight and we were looking at a deficit, uh, mostly due to the new agreement with the association. So Principal Anne and I have been really closely monitoring it and. It's not anything that we found. It's not anything that we did. We've just had a change in our student population, which. Has decreased the expenditures for the rest of the year that, um, it looks and there's no. There have not been any cuts to personnel. It's just around. Students in our population that are no longer at the school. So with those reductions. Um, with the reduction of the expenditures for the rest of the year, but no S E S staffing. We are looking like we're going to be able to come in at the end of the year without having to ask the, the town for any more money. I'll pause there for questions because that might have some, because I know I'm being a little. Unclear because I just don't want to put any personal information out there in a public meeting.
Suzie? I just want to check if the six thousand dollars for the fluid is still likely to come to FinCom.
I don't know that Anne probably would. But I, I don't know about the fluid, but I will check in with Anne.
Well, yeah, no, the idea, I think what Suzie's asking is so we got the money for the oil, but we are still, we were asked to come back to the finance committee to ask about. Reimbursement for the, uh, for the, for the antifreeze. And so. If we're going to be balanced, we're still going to need to. Is, is that, that's not factored into the, our budget? We're still expecting to get that money back right now. That's not. I know it's been spent on our side yet. Do we still need to be reimbursed for it?
I don't know because I don't know what stage in the process of, of asking for it. They were, if it's. Um, I'm just not sure, so I can't speak kind of clearly on that right now, but I'll check in with Anne.
Because if we need to be reimbursed from that, I need to go back in front of the finance committee again to, to ask for that. But if we have like, you know, there's a. Happens, if that's already been paid and it's factored in, or there happens to be an extra six thousand dollars, then we don't really have to go before them to. To make that request, so.
Yep, I can check.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So food service update, so. Uh, this year Schutzeberry, Irving and Leverett all went through Desi procurement reviews. And we got past those. Schutzeberry does not, did not have a Desi administrative review. But Irving and Leverett both did. So what we've done with those two reviews that wrapped up. Last week with our onsite visits is we met, um, the food service directors and I met. On Tuesday, and so we looked at all of the, um. All of the pieces around what they were looking for, any corrective actions. And made sure, so now we're kind of not just looking at Leverett Irving and solving the corrective actions and. Uh, but we're also in rectifying them, but we're also looking at the other two schools and making sure that they're up to compliance with them. So it's been a nice opportunity for Schutzeberry to not have to go through the reviews, not have the. Any corrective actions or the Desi representative coming out and. And looking at every can that might be too close to the floor or every thermometer that's supposed to be in place. But, um, so now we're kind of looking through all of the Schutzeberry and Swift River things as well. Because we're all kind of tied together and, um, we don't know what looks. Schutzeberry had their last review in twenty twenty two and the. Way that they say it is that they backed up with COVID, so it was six years between reviews for the two schools that had them. But now it could be anybody after this. I think they've kind of reshuffled. And now everyone's on a four year review cycle. So for Schutzeberry, it could be next year, the year after the year after that. But at least we have a foundation of, of information and what, you know, what the reviewers are looking for. And it's also going to give us subjects, subjects. Suggestions of what we should do with, um. Adult meal prices with, um, the wellness committee with some things we really need to, um. Kind of evaluate for the school. So, oh, so one of the things, I don't think it was in my director's report, but so one of the things that came out was that the. Uh, we knew that the price for adult meals had to cover, cover the adult. Meal cost of the food, the labor, any supplies. We didn't know there was also a state minimum. And so they calculated year to year, the state minimum is five dollars and twenty eight cents for this year. But it goes up a little bit more every year, so we are increasing the adult meal price. For next year across all four schools, which were all under the adult minimum to five dollars and fifty cents. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, other questions for Caitlin related to her report? Okay, um, Caitlin, there's a subset under the Director of Finance and Operations. It looks like an expense report. Is that something that we have to go over?
No, so those get, those were being shared, um, with every agenda. Now they're just being linked to the, the agenda. And you can look at them if you'd like to, if you have questions about them. I can try to answer.
Okay. Nate?
Caitlin, I just wanted to, uh, ask again, just because Anne. Uh, Anne mentioned it before, but just to address that email that you sent last, I think it was Thursday that said, yeah, the school budgets. But then there's the, the issue with the boiler and just to kind of. Explain that that was kind of a shock to me to read and, and. Again, can you just kind of explain that a little more?
No, the. Suzie might actually have more information on the boiler going back. When I first came in, we had put in for an M S B A project for the boiler. Uh, replacement and we were, oh, and the roof at the time. The roof was not accepted. The boiler pushed forward to the next stage. Um, but what they had put together for the boiler. Was looked to be, and Suzie corrected if I'm wrong, more expensive for the town to go through the M S B A than to address the boiler themselves.
Yeah, and it wasn't sized for our school, blah, blah, blah. So the way the state wanted to do it was not to our benefit at all. And it was expensive.
Really expensive. So the boiler's been on our, our radar, but it doesn't seem like it had. The roof was the main concern and when that was finished. The boiler is still aging. It's still getting towards the end of its life. Um, and it is something that, you know, once the parking lot is done and if we are able to do that. Then it is probably the next project on the list.
Okay.
Okay, I, I met, when I met with Bob Groves and, um. We all met to talk about the, um, parking lot, you know, he talked about the boiler and. That's, he was like, this is a great boiler. It's amazing. This thing's going to keep on kicking and it's going. So it was kind of like a shock when I saw that. Email because I was like, I was under the impression that that was a great boiler, that it was, you know, really. Not something that we needed to worry about, so thanks for that.
But it sounds like there was a, an intermediary problem with some moisture or some liquid underneath it, water underneath it that was addressed and that was the. Impetus of the, the including of it. Is that, that's what Anne said? Right?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. I think also, I, what I find with a, with, we're dealing with HVAC projects in a couple of different schools is. It's not that it will suddenly go, oh no, what are we going to do? It's that it just costs more and more and more to upkeep and to keep getting jamrog out there and to keep it. Keep it functioning. So we're, we're nearing that point where the expense that we're going to have every year. Is really pushing it to, to the front of the, of what we need.
So it is something that we're going to need to address at some point, but it's not like. It's not a next year problem. It's not a, like, it's not a, it's not right on the top of the list.
I would like to put it into the, the next year's town warrant for a capital project.
Parking lot and then boiler.
Yes.
Suzie?
And we might be able to get some, um, diagnosis from jamrog. To sort of what we should be watching for, like, is your child got a fever? We want to know if our boiler's got a fever or not. And, um, and M S, M S B A. Recently underwent some state support changing, so. They may be in a different position and so we may be able to go down that road in a different way by the time we need to.
Yeah, I know Anna had brought up at, at a previous meeting, wondering if there were any sort of. Energy efficiency or green sort of grants to go after in order to try to find something that's more efficient or more. Environmentally friendly as well. So I mean, I don't know what there is for that, but that's another avenue. Maybe we should be considering too. Okay, um, any other questions for Caitlin? All right, we had the principal's report. Our Amherst Pelham representative is not with us tonight. Um, joint supervisory committee, we're meeting on Monday. Um, C S, our previous member is no longer with us, so that moves us right into the policy review. Portion of tonight's meeting. Um, we have a first read for deletion, the notice of the distribution policy. So that is just a first read, no need. To vote on that, right, with the first read. And then we have a first read of public complaints, community use of school facilities. Public solicitations in the schools, school district, legal status and community use of school facilities. Those, does anybody have anything that they want to comment on those or anything that needs to be added to those? Okay, so we'll move those on to the next meeting for a, um. Second read, first vote. Uh, for the second read, first vote for tonight, we have the A D C tobacco products on school premises prohibited. Uh, school committee powers and duties, school committee member resignation and school committee organizational meeting. Interesting that. Weren't those the ones that were on our policy meeting tonight? I mean, not the tobacco product ones, but the member resignation, the organizational meeting, I feel like we just, we just voted.
I'm not sure why that's, yeah, no, we did. This has been policy right now.
Um, so. I think I would like. Can we move to? So I know that we were supposed to vote on tobacco products and I believe we were supposed to vote on powers and duties. I'd like to, I don't know if it's table, make a move to table or check in on those last two, because I feel like we just voted to move those here. At our earlier policy meeting and the only reason I say that is because the school committee organizational meeting. Um, was one that we wanted to. Keep the way we have it and not adopt the mass association of school committees, um, language on it. Uh, Nate?
Yes, uh, the policy on the duties was also part of the. Okay. Review that we were going to. So it's just the tobacco. I believe it's just the tobacco one.
So I would, so that, can we get somebody to, let, let's start with the first thing. Can somebody move? And let's get a second on the tobacco products on school premises.
I moved to, um. Move the tobacco products, uh, on school premises prohibited policy to find a vote at next meeting.
I second that.
Okay, um, Jack moves. Long coat seconds, uh, all in favor? My U I?
Jack, I.
Long coat, I.
Okay, and then this is where I'm going to need a little help. Trevor, can we, can I make a mo, a motion that we? Take the B B A, B B B C and B D A and. I mean, I guess what we want to do is. I kind of just want to strike them and have them come back because we just discussed those tonight to.
For the first time in policy today.
So do we have to address them or can we just let them come back up next, next meeting?
Yeah, I think if, if this is just a clerical error, then we just make a note of that and you don't need to make any sort of motion.
Okay, fantastic.
On them, right?
Okay.
So they'll be coming up, just for clarity's sake, they're going to be coming up for a first vote at the next meeting. Is that the?
They're going to come up for a first read at next meeting.
First read, okay.
All right, thank you. Um, and I, I do feel like that it's important because the school committee organizational one in particular, we've decided to go in a different direction with. Um, all right, so the final vote we have today are, uh, for the J K A A physical restraint of students. J L C B immunization of students and K C D public gifts to the schools. So, uh, we need to move in a second on those.
I move to, um, approve the policies J K A A, J L C B and K C D.
Second that.
All right, so Jack moves. Long coat seconds, uh, all in favor?
I don't know, I.
My U I?
Long coat, I.
Perfect, um. Thank you all. So that brings us to the end of this, our future business, uh, Schutzeberry Policy Committee meeting on June twelfth. At, uh, six thirty P M. There's the next school committee meeting for us will be June twelfth at seven o'clock P M. Uh, budget and personnel committee is not meeting right now. Union twenty eight, joint supervisory, uh, Nate and. Katrina and I will have to be there on Monday at seven o'clock. Uh, Schutzeberry Town Meeting is May thirty first. Uh, be great for us to be there to be able to speak to the budget that we've approved. Uh, are there any other future agenda items that we'd like to have added to this agenda? Uh, are there any other future agenda items that we'd like to have added to this agenda?
Um, I was going to ask if we, as part of, um, our policies maybe show like the, the red line version as we're reviewing them, um, before we do final approval, just to like show like, if we have some updates, make sure like we're actually seeing them. Um, because it's hard sometimes to remember what you want to update versus not.
Okay, um, can you speak to, so like, if we make edits, you want to be able to see the edits as we're continuing to discuss them? Yes?
Yeah, after first read, um, any edits, if we could just do track changes to make it easier to see what's, what we're updating.
Um, Shannon, can you ask Robin about that for us? Is that something you could? Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, that, I guess I could see why that would be useful so that we know what we've already addressed and what we haven't. Okay, um, good, uh, Katrina, thank you. You've made it through your first meeting. I'm hoping we didn't bore you too much. And, uh, I feel like we really got this ordered down. If we can just get Anna on board, we'll be able to do that way faster, uh, with less awkward. I have a sixteen-year-old kid who for a while was watching these on video afterwards and then just telling me what a dork I was. So anything we could do to make this less dorky would be really great. Um, so, uh, yeah, I hear a move to adjourn.
I'll move.
All right, long coat seconds, all in favor? All right.
Bye.
Love to see y'all next time.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Katrina. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, guys.